So I'd like to call the meeting to order of the Redding Municipal Light Department Board of Commissioners. This meeting of the Redding Municipal Light Department, RMLD Board of Commissioners, is being recorded via Zoom for distribution to the community television stations in Redding, North Redding, Wilmington, and Lynnfield. The RMLD Board of Commissioners recognizes the importance of hearing public comment at the discretion of the Chair on items on the official agenda as well as on items not on the official agenda. We ask that all questions or comments from the public be directed to the Chair and that all parties, including members of the RMLD Board, act in a professional and courteous manner when addressing the Board or responding to comments. Once recognized by the Chair, all persons addressing the Board shall state their name and address prior to speaking. It is the role of the Chair to maintain order in all public comment or ensuing discussion. Our Secretary, of course, is Mr. Pacino. So what I'd like to do is, I guess we'll move into the public comment portion of this, and specifically the RMLD Citizens Advisory Board, the report on the Citizens Advisory Board meeting on August 20th. Who was present at the August 20th?
I was, Mr. Chair.
Phil, was that you?
That was me. That was me.
Okay. Was there anything to report from that particular meeting?
It pretty much kind of dovetailed with the meeting that we had the following that, that we had at the same time.
Okay. Good.
Pretty much the same presentations, if I've got the right one, that we saw with the fellow from John from the department who presented on the 5G.
Yes, right.
Right.
Great. Thank you.
Very much. That was the main topic that was covered that night. So it's kind of a preview of what we saw later on.
Great. Thank you, Phil. I see we have no liaisons to the Select Board with us tonight. And in terms of public comment, Grace will be giving a presentation here at the further along in our meeting this evening. So unless any member of the public would like to say something different before we get to that point, you're certainly welcome to. If not, I'd like to...
John?
Yes?
Oh, I didn't have my hand up. I'm sorry. I just wanted to say I heard about the new initiative you guys are doing with the heat pumps working with Adobe. Yeah, I thought that was wonderful. I think it's a wonderful service because I personally have personal experience knowing the kinds of problems that a customer can run into with a heat pump. So I just want to commend you. And that's certainly one of the things that we will work to lift up along with the other things we have already lifted up, the rooftop solar, and we're in the midst of working on a shred the peak article to go in the papers. So we will add that because we certainly want to encourage people to go to heat pumps. So thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Gail. I appreciate that. We'd like to do a presentation at this point to a retired Commissioner, Mr. Thomas O'Rourke. And he's with us in one of these...
Hello, everyone.
There he is. He just waved his hand.
Yep.
Hey, Tom. Welcome back. A familiar face.
Thank you, Dave. Good to be back for a short time.
So tonight, the RMLD and Commissioners would like to thank Mr. Tom O'Rourke for his six years of service as Commissioner at the RMLD. Tom was a valuable contributor in helping to reshape and promote the RMLD, including excellent suggestions on town payment methods and general manager evaluation approaches gleaned from his extensive corporate career. We especially appreciated Tom's clear and calm views on all proposals, and we have missed him. In honor of his service to the RMLD, we have a special lamp that lived a previous life as an RMLD residential meter. You can see a picture of it there that Tracy is holding up.
Nice.
Tom would ask that you always use an LED bulb in this lamp to continue to support RMLD electrical usage in an energy-saving manner. Oh, there it is. An even better picture of it. So this is a beautiful artifact from the previous years of RMLD, and Tom, we hope you use it in good stead. And would any of the other Commissioners care to comment?
Yes, I would. This is Dave Hennessy. And Tom, it's been great to be a colleague of yours on the Board for almost all of those six years. And I want to say I really appreciate your style of communication and debate. You always made sure to clarify the issue and clarify the different points of view before you shared your own ideas. And I think you set a great example of Board Commissioner leadership. So thank you.
Yeah. And I'll just add to that, that, you know, I appreciate, Tom, all your guidance and your, what you brought to the table. I served for the whole time you were there, plus, plus. But, you know, you brought quite a lot of viewpoints, especially some of the personnel issues that came forward. So I definitely appreciated what you brought, and I consider you a friend.
Same here. Thank you, Phil.
John, can I say a couple of words?
Absolutely. Please do, Colleen.
Tom, thank you very much for all your guidance and support. I really enjoyed working with you. You gave us a lot of value. You volunteered your time to help some of us with your expertise, and I just wanted to say how grateful we all were.
Thank you, Colleen.
Tom, would you care to say anything?
Yes. Well, first of all, thank you for all those nice words there. Much appreciated from folks that I've worked with for six years. First of all, retirement is an adjustment. So far, the most difficult part is trying to get sleep, especially on the third Thursday of each month. But recently, the light went on, so to speak, and I started watching videos of the past RMLD Board meetings, and I've been sleeping like a baby. Some advice for when you guys transfer off. But seriously, just for a moment, during my time as Commissioner, I've had a lot of interesting and challenging and rewarding experiences. It's been gratifying to work at the RMLD for that time with the strong focus on providing clean, cost-effective, and reliable energy, maximum uptime, and an emphasis on expanding the portfolio to environmentally friendly energy sources. I'd like to, you know, again, take the opportunity to thank my fellow Commissioners, John Stempak, who's our Chair, Dave Hennessy, Phil Pacino, Dave Talbot. Unfortunately, Bob, I didn't get a chance to work with you, but I'm sure you will do a terrific job in the role. And I appreciate all the professionalism, support, and friendship over those years. Colleen, to you and your staff, I also want to acknowledge that you deserve the recognition for your dedication, successes, and your innovative approaches to our business at RMLD. During that time, I have to say I've been very proud of what we accomplished as a team for our served communities of Wilmington, Redding, North Redding, and Lynnfield. Finally, I want to thank the Citizens Advisory Board and really all the customers of our served towns. I think I speak for all the members of the Board that were there during that time. We always strive to make investments, and really, all our decisions were with the lens of focusing on what the impact would be to our ratepayers. I'm sure this will continue as, to be the focus for the RMLD in the years to come. So I appreciate the recognition. The lamp looks terrific. I assume it comes with the stuffed animal, Tracy, but I don't know if that's true. Okay. Wonderful. Well, one of my seven grandkids, I'm sure, will, after I get through with it, will be glad to use it. So thank you. I appreciate the recognition and taking time out, and I'm sure our paths will cross over the course of the time to come. I've been in Redding for 45 years or so, and I'm hoping to be here for at least a few more years. Thanks, and I appreciate all the support.
Thank you, Tom.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo what my colleague said I didn't get a chance a minute ago. So thank you, Tom. You were a great mentor to me, and thank you, and hope to see you around town.
Good. Thank you. I feel badly that I can't stay on for the meeting, but again, I'll watch the video of the meeting, and it'll be...
You'll be asleep by eight.
No, no, no.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much, Tom.
Yeah, thank you all, and I appreciate the time today. It's nice to connect with all friends, Wendy, and Tracy, and Colleen, and Ameen, and Chuck, and everybody else that's on the call. And thanks for everything, especially Tracy. You have one of the, I always said in my years as a professional, being an executive support to one person is challenging, but when you also have to support the Board and all our various insundry requests, and also feed us and, you know, remind us and all the rest of the stuff. So it's a great example of servant leadership. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Tom.
Thanks, Tom. Bye.
Thank you. Have a good meeting.
I'd like to move on to item number six, the report of the Citizens Advisory Board meeting that was held just a few, I guess, an hour ago or so?
Yes. That was me, John. I was the representative. Oh, do you want to go to the cab representative here first?
We could do both, or do both. Would you, the cab representative, would you please just go ahead and speak?
Actually, it doesn't look like that we have a cab representative here.
No, I didn't think so. I thought maybe my screen, there was something down below, but I didn't see anybody from the cab.
Yeah. It was supposed to be Joe Markey, but he wasn't able to make the cab meeting. So Kathleen will look into that. Sorry.
But I don't think I have anything to report because I believe what is going to be presented right now is all of what saw. So I think it's going to be, we'll get a little extra with Grace presenting, which they mentioned in the meeting that did come up. So some of the people are going to wait now. So, but everything else, I think we're going to see from the General Manager's report.
Excellent. Thank you. Item number seven, approval of the Board minutes for April 21st, April 30th, May 23rd, and June 18th. Could I have a suggested motion?
Motion to approve the minutes?
I think we're going to table that for next meeting.
Ah, okay. Did I get a chance to review them at this point?
Yeah.
Ah, okay. Oh, Phil, I keep forgetting. This is...
It was not announced until 10 o'clock, so we were not able to get all the returns filed in time.
Right. This is major tax season for you.
Can I ask a question, though? If we have a quorum of people who did review them, would that still constitute a vote? And that way, we'll be up to date with our minutes?
Understanding was we weren't, we weren't voting per, Tracy said that in the email earlier today, that there hadn't been reviewed yet, so we wouldn't...
They weren't in the Board book. I was waiting for Phil to review them.
I would suggest we table them until the next meeting.
I'll have a few more then, too.
Right now, I'll have them for the next meeting. I'll guarantee you that.
Okay, Phil. That's great. Is there any inconvenience, Colleen, in terms of not approving them until the next meeting?
No.
Okay.
I'll retract my motion to approve the minutes then, John.
Thank you.
Just trying to keep it moving so that we're in compliance with, you know, the timeframes.
Okay. If there's an issue with that, we'll just call a special meeting to approve the minutes before the next meeting. But I know that...
Mr. Chair, if I may...
Go ahead.
Maybe we can go back to having a rotation. If there's any roadblocks where they're piling up, you know, any of us could review them, right? So maybe...
That's a good point. Yeah.
Yeah.
You mind, Phil?
I don't mind. I mean, I, you know, just this particular month was just a problem.
Right. Of course.
Not a problem other than this particular month, and the fact that this meeting got moved to an earlier date. If this meeting were the 17th, which is what we had tomorrow, there would be no issue.
Understood.
Yeah.
Okay.
Same back day.
So why don't we, why don't we go ahead and, would the Board like to rotate them at this point? And different Board members pick up different months? Or Phil, do you feel confident that you could get through all of them by the next meeting?
Yes, I can get through all of them. Like I said, I guarantee you I can do that.
Okay. Thank you. We'll do that, then. We'll just table this for tonight. I'd like to move into the General Manager's report. Colleen?
Okay. Thanks. I'll go quickly. Just a COVID update in accordance with our emergency operating procedure 20-03 infectious disease. I updated, it's a living document, so it gets updated quite often. The latest update had to do with the remobilization. We returned the remaining five employees that were working remote since March. The building remains closed per the, to the public for the Board of Health. We established a health check-in station at the back of the cafeteria. This self-help is for taking your temperature, going through the screening questions, and only employees that are returning and any vendors that may have to come in and say, fix the air conditioning unit, you know, only urgent matters where people are being allowed in the building. We are still going with virtual for all of our meetings unless they need to fix building issues. Any other ones, they have to get permission from the General Manager and HR. The GM door is disabled. I think I sent out an email to everyone. Everyone is to enter. If you're not coming in to do a self-check, if you haven't been in the building since March, you would come through and check in at the back of the cafeteria. Otherwise, you're coming in over by the control room door. We're practicing social distancing, wearing masks in accordance with the Governor's orders. All the offices and cubicles have had barriers installed, and the lobby flow pattern with signs for when the public building opens are in place. Any questions on that?
Great.
Okay. Let's go into small cell. So we talked earlier at another meeting about the FCC order on 5G small cell sites. The RMLD remains focused on the master agreement. We're down to, you know, we're substantially complete with some small issues with AT&amp;T, Verizon, just trying to wrap that up. All the technical specifications for RMLD have been completed. There's about 43 technical drawings that we did. We are focusing on employee safety, and we are focusing on the communication with the towns to make sure that their aesthetic policy, their small cell aesthetic policy dovetails into our master agreement. So we've, I have sent out emails to the town. We've had discussions, and then we, I did meetings with Redding and Lynnfield. We have, North Redding is not scheduled yet, but Wilmington is tomorrow at 11:00. So that seems to be going well. We're more than happy to help review their aesthetic policy. But the FCC orders, as they affect the municipality versus the municipal light plant, are different. You know, the fees are different. Everything's different. So Town Council will need to help those towns, and we're more than happy to make reviews and ensure that that communication, we don't want any, any of the small cell companies coming in and telling the towns, you know, RMLD is not supporting whatever. So with this improved communication, we have emails going back and forth with the town if they permit people to come into the right of way, and then with DPW for any poll petitions. Any questions on that? Great.
I'm glad you're being so proactive with that, Colleen.
Oh, yeah. Well, being a new technology, I mean, it can just, it can just be a nightmare for new processes and stuff. So, yeah, we're being very proactive, and I think when it hits, it's gonna, there's going to be a lot, and it's going to impact our staff significantly with, you know, doing poll loading analysis and things like that. And so setting the stage, I think, is going to help mitigate that. The last thing I have, which might take me a couple of minutes to go through, stop me if you think I'm talking too fast, but this involves the OPEB trust document, Declaration of Trust that you guys signed back in January and February. It didn't get to the town until May. What that did is, so the Town Treasurer currently and has been serving as the trustee of the RMLD OPEB funds. It's kind of like a default. And as an operation of Massachusetts General Law 32B says, you know, if you don't have anything else in place, the Town Treasurer is the trustee. The Treasurer indicated that the town of Redding would be investing in the State Retirees' Benefit Trust Fund, which is called the SRBFT, and provided historical return data at approximately 7% over 10-year average, which I presented to you back when we made that decision. In order for the current trustee to invest these OPEB funds into the SRBFT, a formal declaration of trust was needed to be adopted by the RMLD Board of Commissioners and designate the Town Treasurer as the trustee. So that was a bit of a formality as opposed to just the regular law default as the trust. So that document was generated and signed, as I said. The Treasurer seeks resolution to a dispute on the signature of the trust, which means that it hasn't gone forward. The disputes related to adding a fore cause language for removal of the trust, eliminating the Board of Commissioner ability to provide input to the Treasurer on investment strategy, and the third thing was adding specific law language that reiterates that there is compliance required for reporting, auditing, et cetera. Let's talk about the fore cause for a second. The Treasurer requested merit language with the Town's trust document on removal for cause. The merit language that the trustee was requesting, I wanted that in writing, so I asked for that. The Treasurer cited that there's no language in the existing Town's document about the removal, which to me means that the town can remove the trustee without cause. Also worth noting is the Board of Selectmen has indirect oversight over the trustee through the Town Manager, and in the case of the Board of Commissioners, there is no oversight. So regardless of this apples to oranges, the point is that the RMLD should maintain its statutory options by having the right to change trustees as they see fit. On the second issue, the Board of Commissioner input, the trustee is asking to remove the language that allows the Board of Commissioners to provide any input to investment strategy. The law does allow the trustee to have full investment strategy rights. However, within the trustee's obligation, the Board should be able to give some input. While the Treasurer would not like to entertain this input, the Board can still vote to make requests and input to the Treasurer. If the Treasurer chooses by the declaration of trust not to heed the request and make his or her own decision, which is within the right of the trustee, then the Board could change trustees. The third issue on the Massachusetts General Law language, the Treasurer would like to specifically call out some law language about complying with audits and reporting, et cetera. The trust document must follow the law, and therefore, it is irrelevant to redrafting the document to contain law that is already applicable. So here's what the options are that I am presenting to you. The law gives us a right to change the trustee due to a new board, new investment strategy, et cetera, and it has nothing to do with the trustee doing a good job. It is not personal. Maintaining statutory flexibility, and it is a, it is highly unusual for any trust document to have fore cause language. Since the Treasurer is allowed to invest in the SRBFT under PRIX with a declaration of trust, an option would be to direct the General Manager to provide feedback from the Board of Commissioners at this meeting with no change, and ask the Treasurer to reconsider to sign the document. Option after that. If he does not want to sign, we can go to the local retirement board, who can also invest directly into PRIX with a document of trust. The Board of Commissioners could direct the General Manager upon a negative reply from the Treasurer to send the trust document to the retirement board for consideration. The local retirement board can invest OPEB funds directly with PRIX. Third option, explore, or third step, I should say, explore establishing a special OPEB Board of Trustees that has been done by other municipal light plants. The Board would be comprised of five to 13 members. It's all spelled out in Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 32, Section 32B, Section 20, about what those members have to be. The benefit of this special trustee is it provides employees, retirees, with representation on matters that directly affect them. So some of the Board members would be, you know, retirees and existing employees. And I can send you the law if you want to see how that spells out. Just as a reminder, the original recommendation that I made, which was to go in this direction for the Town Treasurer to invest in PRIX, is because that was the path of least resistance based on a presentation of the PRIX, PRIX investment historical returns of approximately 7% of municipal funds. So, you know, when I got here, it wasn't really being invested. I, you know, it got turned over to the Treasurer, and it was my recommendation to create this document and to have the town invest. Those are my opinions on the three issues of dispute, and I need you to kindly advise to give me direction on which way you'd like me to go. Thank you.
Well, I'd like to make a comment on that, and having a number of trusts myself and knowing an attorney who actually creates trusts, you know, you, as the owner of the trust, can certainly remove a trustee at any point in time. I've never seen any document that has fore cause in it because it gets into, what do you mean? What is fore cause? And then how do you define it? And then it gets into the sticky points and gets very granular, and that just leads to more and more discussion and proudly arguments. So I, one, I don't understand why the town has picked on this, and asking that the Board of Selectmen not have input seems quite foreign to me.
Board of Commissioners.
Excuse me. Board of Commissioners. Not have input seems foreign to me because we're trying to do the best for all of our employees, obviously, and the people who depend on this fund. So if the, my sense, and I will leave it open to the other Commissioners for discussion, is that if the town does not want to cooperate with us on this, then I think we have to find our own path. And I think the ones that you had mentioned in terms of doing it through the local retirement board or forming our own board, which we had investigated in the past, is more effort, certainly. So my feeling is we ought to consider doing a local, the local retirement board as opposed to working through the town unless the town can resolve this issue. That's just my opinion. Do the other Commissioners have a thought on this? Dave, you're on mute.
Yeah. I'd agree with you, John. I think if we can't resolve it, we should look at another alternative, retirement board. Makes sense.
But, John, excuse me. Was the resistance from the Treasurer or from other parts of the town?
I believe that the input came from both the Treasurer and Town Council. That's my understanding. I just got emails with the three issues that I stated.
So, Dave?
I also ran those issues because we had our council draft up the declaration of trust that you guys signed. So I wanted to, you know, respect his concerns and respect his request and send them to Town Council to get an opinion. And I've conveyed that it's consistent with my opinion of what I've presented to you.
And as I understand it, just one second here, I'm sorry. The, when you asked whether the Town's document had similar language, it apparently doesn't. Is that correct?
Um...
In other words, fore cause?
Yeah. He's, the Town Treasurer cites that there's, there's no language that doesn't say it. It's like the opposite of does say it. So, but I was looking for the language that I could just, you know, tell you as my Board, this is what he would like, and this is what is in the Town document. So I wasn't able to retrieve that, other than an absence of.
It would seem to me that we would be doing the wrong thing to give up control of these funds if the town is not going to invest them correctly. And because of, I don't know, I don't understand why they find this wording difficult, but certainly from my sources and from what I've heard so far, there's no reason not to do it in a joint manner with the town. And as a matter of understanding...
The funds are not co-mingled, John. It's, you know, maintaining our statutory flexibility in the trust document is allowed by law. So, and it's not co-mingled funds, so it's not impacting the town.
It's just the management of the, of the fund is done by, by the Town for Redding Light, correct?
By the Treasurer.
By the Treasurer. And again, going back to the, if the, if the town has, what is their document with the Treasurer? And if we can get a copy of that, then...
I have that. It's, it doesn't have any, it doesn't have that language in it.
So that's why I find it odd that the Town Lawyer, Town Council would ask for that in language from Redding Light. Maybe it's something we can discuss with the Select Board, maybe not necessarily Town Council.
Um...
It's, I don't know.
I'm not sure. I would like to get the money, you know, move forward to get the money invested. I mean, right now, it's currently in some money markets, so...
Yeah, the money markets are not producing hardly anything in terms of returns, as we all know.
It doesn't seem to make any sense that Redding doesn't want to invest in dollars for Redding Light. I'm just, I'm struggling with why they're resistant to...
Right.
...participate. And I think maybe a dialogue needs to be opened up, you know, maybe with the Select Board or the Select Board representative that can attend this meeting. select board or the select board representative that can attend this meeting and maybe they can bring it back. Um, it just, it doesn't seem.
I think that's, I think that's a fine idea. Um, maybe uh, we could have a discussion with Mark Docster uh, about this, have perhaps even put on their agenda as to why they're doing this. Um, and try to move this forward. Um, I'm not sure when their next meeting is. Uh, but uh, if, if we can't get resolution on it. I think, I mean, Colleen, I think you'd mentioned that the town already went ahead and invested their funds. And starting in May, is that correct?
Um, I'm not exactly sure when they invested, but because it's not co-mingled, they could move forward as soon as their trust document was, was ready and signed.
Right, but the, but the intent was to do it together, right? I mean, we talked about.
Well, originally, but I think they found out that you could do it separately and, and so they moved forward, which was, you know.
Okay, so let's do this. Um, let's do it in a parallel path. I mean, let's try to open the dialogue with uh, the select board. Uh, one to ask why and try to get more resolution. In the second piece, um, let's investigate this local retirement board if we can just invest separately through them so that if we don't get a satisfactory answer from the board of select, or select board, then uh, we have another option and.
Well, i- if it's okay with you, I'd like to email him back and just give him the, you know, the input that, that I've received and ask him if he would consider signing it. And then if he's not, then I think we go to the next step. We can discuss it with the board of selectmen. Um, a- as, as an indirect oversight and in parallel at the retirement board at that time. And I can also pull the other municipal light plants to see what um, you know, how they've organized their special uh board of trustees and what banks they are using in order to move forward.
Sure.
Okay.
You need a motion.
Can I, can I ask one question, John?
Well, yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead, Dave.
I'm just curious, uh, maybe Wendy knows this. How long has it been in a money market fund right now? How long has it been uninvested? Did it happen?
Oh, uh, probably as long as Colleen's been here, seven, well, seven years, six years, maybe.
Okay.
Yeah, but that's where it was, that's where it's always been. Uh, this was a new uh movement to move it into the re, the, the retirement board. Um, the SRBF, BTF that I said. And you need a formal declaration of trust. It can't just be the trustee defaulted as the town treasurer. You actually had to have that document that we generated and, and you all signed. So it, in order for it to go into the Pritt.
One quick question, not to belabor this, but didn't we approve this like a year ago?
Uh, in January.
賠償OPEB monies this.
January.
Only in January?
Yeah, January.
Remember that.
Um, unfortunate um, that it's happening this way, uh, but tell me, so what do you need, Colleen? Do you need a motion from us to investigate this?
No, I, I think you just gave me directive. I mean, a pretty unanimous direct, direction. I don't think we need a motion. Thank you. That's all I had, by the way. I'll, 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 I'll keep you up to date on that.
Great, thank you very much.
All right, you're welcome.
I'd like to move into Chuck's presentation at the Integrated Resources. Um, Chuck, are you uh, you're there, I see you.
They killed mute, so you should be able to hear me now. As well as you. Um, so I wanted to begin this evening uh by updating uh, the commissioners on what we've been doing in response to uh, the limitations on customer interaction as a result of COVID nineteen. And we've gone to webinars and virtual activities. Uh, and I wanted to touch on a couple of those this evening. Um, we have sponsored an art contest, which has led to the covers of our annual reports and artwork that decor, decorates the uh foyer uh at two thirty ash. And this year we're not able to deliver that uh on an in-person uh platform. So uh, what we're doing is going to uh voluntary participation. Uh, we are preparing uh an educational video on aspects of electric utility operations. The students will get to watch that. They will get to take some of the concepts uh out of those and present an artist rendition uh of one or more of those uh video lessons or video facts, if you will. Uh, they will then be able to uh take a photo of their completed artwork, uh, upload the uh scan of that. Uh, we will judge it. We will pick five winners from uh each school in the RMLD service territory. Uh, we will announce the winners mid-November and we'll send out uh ten dollar Amazon book uh gift cards to them. So we've gone to a, a virtual uh approach to doing this and still reaching out. Um, next please. We uh, we've got another uh virtual uh environment approach to uh electric uh vehicles. We come up on National Drive Electric Week in uh two weeks. And so we are putting together virtual test drive. Uh, there'll be uh video showing uh what it's like to drive an EV. We are talking about having uh some of our existing ratepayers with EVs uh probably show off uh their uh vehicles. Uh, we will uh use RMLD staff at the vault and uh uh take uh a video of uh the uh driving the vehicle around so that people can see how the mechanics work. Uh, and uh talk with uh local dealerships. We'll put all of this together uh in a package. Uh, we are going to work with other municipal light plants and uh start to create uh video library of um this and, and some other activities. Uh, right after we get done with National EV Week, we're up on Public Power Week. And we've typically held open houses for that. Uh, we can't do that this time, so we've collected a number of virtual events uh that we're going to be able to do in the communities. Uh, we're going to have story at the local libraries are digging out uh an inventory of uh titles of uh books and materials that have an electric theme to them. Uh, we're going to put uh small share pumpkins out, have those decorated. And again, uh, when those are finished, uh, the, the kids will be able to take pictures of them, send them back into us. Uh, we are looking to put together uh some science experiments relating to electricity uh that we'll be able to publish and, and have the kids do. We're setting up a photo scavenger hunt. Uh, kids will go out, uh families will go out and take pictures uh in the four communities uh of various uh, we send them out to hunt for. And we're putting together uh another video, uh again, hopefully for uh the library. Uh, we're putting together a day in the life of a lineman and we've gotten uh helmet cam and uh we've got explanations of all the personal protective equipment that uh the linemen wear. Uh, the helmet cam will uh take us up in a bucket to the top of the pole and people will uh get to experience uh what it's like uh to be forty to forty-five feet in the air. Uh, so we're, we're looking for uh different opportunities uh to be able to reach out to the community uh even though we can't have uh social events uh at this particular point in time. Uh, next slide, please. Um. One of the things that um we launched earlier this year was heat pump program. And we realized very early on that uh we needed additional resources in order to uh get to where uh customer expectations for how these systems work and what they will do became appropriate. We also uh wanted to work with customers. There are uh two levels of heat pump technology out there. There's standard, which works down to around thirty-five uh forty degrees. And then there are cold climate heat pumps, which will uh work down uh below the freezing point. And uh, we need uh some resources to be able to help customers understand what those differences are, how they're work, uh what if any supplemental heating uh requirements uh necessary for, for those two. We want to work with contractors so that the heat pump equipment is appropriately sized going in. Uh, and um, we're going to get uh technical reviews of all of the heat pump uh proposals that come in. And when somebody uh is looking uh to implement a heat pump system, they will immediately be uh shunted off to Abode. Uh, Abode is a uh local company headquartered in Reading, actually. And uh, they will help uh customers understand uh the different proposal options that are out there. Uh, they will work to make sure that all of the equipment that goes in is coordinated. Um, and uh they will review the uh post-installation uh materials to make sure that everything was done correctly. All of this is simply to enhance our technical capabilities in making customers uh comfortable with this technology. Uh, and eventually, hopefully increase the adoption rates of uh the high efficiency air source heat pumps. So uh, next please. Moving on to the power supply report, uh, I have put together uh this chart uh and been keeping it uh updated. Uh, this happens to be through uh August. And what you'll see is we're running below what was forecasted uh by ENE uh for our power supply activity this year. But we're ahead of uh the twenty nineteen uh actual results. And part of what's been going on is we had a warmer winter and then a hotter summer uh than we had been uh planning for. Uh, I've looked at what the NOAA is telling us for the upcoming winter season and they are predicting again a warmer than average winter. So in preparing the uh loads going forward for the twenty twenty-one um year, I uh have used uh very slightly adjusted twenty twenty experience uh which will continue to reflect whatever COVID impacts we're having and uh the warmer climate that we've experienced uh recently. But uh right now, uh through August, we're running just about three percent uh below our forecast. And uh, we're hoping that uh through the rest of the year, uh we will um recover some of that and finish slightly below what we anticipated the loads would be. Given that we were looking at far more severe impacts from COVID nineteen, uh I don't think uh we're in very bad shape right now. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, our power supply portfolio has been performing very well. Uh, our contracts uh tend to make it uh very stable. And uh, at this point, uh, we're running a uh cumulative um benefit to uh the um budget versus actual. Uh, if you go to the next slide, please, Tracy. Uh, you can see that uh for the most part, our energy costs uh have been tracking uh what was budgeted. Uh, the energy costs in May were down. Um, one of the things that uh is happening is that we are experiencing uh the lowest prices uh in marginal uh energy costs uh that uh we've seen uh probably since ISO New England opened in nineteen ninety-nine. Uh, next slide, please, Tracy. Our capacity costs, uh, when we look at budget versus actual, uh, the actual costs are coming in below our the majority of our capacity costs are set uh at uh previous year's peak and the um, forward capacity market uh bidding. But what we're seeing is that uh our sub uh transmission accounts with Nexter, with um National Grid and EverSource, uh, they are formula rates and they are charging us less than uh we budgeted uh through them. Uh, so our capacity costs are lower than anticipated. Uh, Tracy, next please. Transmission costs because of the battery, because of the peaking unit that we have and uh because of uh our ability through Shred the Peak and other programs uh to manage our transmission peaks, uh, we've actually uh been very good about keeping our capacity, our transmission costs um below budget as well. So uh, so far, we're, we're doing a lot better than expected. And uh, we're still in a low cost period and we expect to be there for a while. So power supply is, is looking good. Uh, next slide, please. Um, again, if you go back to the load slide at the beginning, now, don't change the slides, please, Tracy. But if we go back to what was presented in the load slides at the beginning, uh, you saw that we were running, uh, our loads uh were down. And we were actually uh as a result of that selling into the market for January, February, March, April, and May. Selling into the market is what happens when that yellow uh bar chart color uh is below the zero line. You'll notice that in June, we went way above because June was much warmer than anticipated. Uh, we had uh higher than anticipated sales. And as a result, uh, we uh were buying uh energy from the market. Uh, you can't see it, but there is a thin yellow line at the top of the July curve. This then says the same thing uh as we saw earlier, which is that our loads are up and we're actually uh in a position to uh buy some resources from the market. So. Um, next please, Tracy. So I uh, I wanted to give you an update. Uh, in your package are uh two versions of uh current policy thirty. Um, right now, uh, a piece of legislation which grew out of the original Golden Bill uh is in uh conference committee, uh looking to be resolved between the House and the Senate as to what comes out. And that's going to provide a clean energy standard update. It will provide a statute uh that will apply to municipal light plants uh and dictate uh performance objectives uh for all of the municipal light plants in Massachusetts. The new uh name of this is Roadmap twenty fifty. The original Golden Bill uh stepped up by twenty fifty to an eighty percent carbon portfolio. And Roadmap twenty fifty takes it all the way to a hundred percent uh in the year twenty fifty. Now, the previous uh statutes, the uh RPS, the Clean Energy Standard and what we're proposing in the uh Golden Bill had annual incremental targets built in. Roadmap twenty fifty does not have annual targets, but is out every ten years the objective that uh the utilities need to meet. So the Horizon targets under the Clean Energy Standard, uh Roadmap twenty fifty are fifty percent uh of the portfolio non-carbon by twenty thirty, seventy-five percent of the portfolio non-carbon by twenty forty, and a hundred percent of the portfolio non-carbon by twenty fifty. Non-carbon will also be defined as retiring certificates associated with uh energy production uh from resources uh that we control. So while it's undefined for intervening periods, uh, it does spell out more aggressive targets uh than the Golden Bill did. This will become effective upon the signature of the governor. We do not know uh when it becomes effective uh what our obligations for the remainder of twenty twenty will be and uh going forward into twenty twenty-one, uh, we will probably have some latitude in defining that. But at this point, we don't know. So uh, next slide, please. What I did was I took the portfolio chart that you've uh seen for quite a while and uh I stripped the RPS and the Clean Energy Standard out. Uh, they were very confusing to look at uh under this scenario and they don't apply. So right now, I left the original uh Golden Bill as sort of what our planning starting point was here on the chart. And I have added uh the goals. And I have added the goals that are laid out for Roadmap 2050. So the light green line on the right side of the chart shows in 2030, 50% of our portfolio being non-carbon or carbon-free emissions. And in 2040, I've extended the graph out a little bit, it's at 75%. So I was able to tie those two points onto the graph. The dark green line is simply representative of where we expected to start with the Golden Bill and what it would take for us to meet the more aggressive Roadmap 2050 standard. So that's laid out. The resources have not changed. And we'll just take a second and remind everyone that that thin gray line that appears from 2024 out through 2040 is our entitlement in the Stony Brook peaking units. The broader gray lines are bilateral contracts that we have. They are currently not specific as to carbon emission. However, those contracts are with Nextera, and we've been in discussions with Nextera. We can convert those contracts to carbon-free. We would have to buy the effects associated with the Stony Brook nuclear plant. But basically, the point in all of this is we have a very good start on compliance with Roadmap 2050. We still have enough resources in our portfolio to be able to acquire and retire the appropriate certificates and meet the objective for 2030. So we've got a good start. And as this progresses, we will be working with the C A B and the Board of Commissioners to get a policy in place that complies with the Roadmap 2050 requirements. So, next slide, please. So, next question then is what are the impacts on retail rates as we do this? I left the chart for the golden impacts on here, and I added the impacts of Roadmap 2050. Because Roadmap 2050 is more aggressive, without making other adjustments at this point, that will result in higher rate increases than the Golden Bill would have. Now, there are things that we can do to that portfolio going forward that will allow us to mitigate some of those rate impacts. But I just thought I would remind everybody of at least, based on our current portfolio, what those impacts look like. So, next slide, please. So, next steps, once we get the signature of the governor, we're going to know what it is that we need to do, what our goals and objectives are. And we will be able to identify the conformance issues that we need to do to bring our current sustainability policy into a clean energy policy going forward. We will prepare recommendations for a compliance plan and the action items that are necessary to do that. We will identify alternatives and the associated financial impacts and make sure that we have the objectives of our strategic plan and our IRD roadmap integrated into the program activity. We'll present that package to the Board of Commissioners and get some policy directives. So, next, please. The two documents that were attached were a clean version and a red markup version of the Clean Energy Policy. This is still very much in draft form, and until the governor signs the bill, we don't know whether this would be in compliance with the new statute. But it's a start, and it gets people some information to focus on and think about. And that's it for me.
And Chuck, I might just mention, and we're going to be addressing this perhaps in our next meeting. But I know that as you went down in this particular document, one of the sources was biomass. And I know that a number of the commissioners are concerned, very concerned about using biomass because of the impact on forests, basically, that takes such a long time. So that might be one of the things that we may not be interested in approving. So I just wanted to mention that.
Yeah, I agree, John. In fact, I sent out to some of the board members and to Chuck and Colleen some articles. MIT Sloan did a report on biomass in the New Yorker magazine as well. And it appears it's not very renewable. I mean, wind and solar renew every day, but trees renew every generation at best. And a lot of environmental scientists are now saying that it's not reduced carbon emissions, biomass. So it looks like it's a big chunk of what would have going forward. Is it, Chuck, can you give a sense of how, from a cost perspective, is biomass less expensive than some of the other renewable sources? Is that why it has such a big chunk? And I know you mentioned last time, Chuck, that you know there's a lot of controversy with biomass. So I'm just curious what your take on it is.
There is, and there are two sources of biomass. One is methane and the other is green material. Biomass just functions differently. I do know that the Palmer Project is taking, for example, tree trimming waste that we have here, chipping it and consuming it to produce electricity. One of the other aspects of biomass is that it is a dispatchable resource. So it meets the ability to offset capacity and transmission. It runs at night, which solar does not do. So there are a host of attributes, if you will, around all of these projects. We weigh them all when we look at the cost benefits and the risks associated with the project. And at the time that we were involved in reviewing these, they were part of the RPS, and they in fact still are part of the RPS. So we're on a shifting tableau in terms of what's available, what we should do, what we shouldn't do. You know, where does nuclear stand in everybody's thinking? That's been a touchpoint issue for a lot of people. So there are no resources without some sort of impact. And we welcome the opportunity to have that kind of a discussion with the commission so that we get clear policy directives on how stewardship should be valued and approached within RMLD.
Right. And I know, Chuck, you're not deciding whether biomass is considered renewable or not. Other people are doing that. I just wonder if as a commission, as commissioners, should we, you know, investigate this more? And I'd love to know what the people from Grace think about it and others. And could we, as part of our plan, make sure that biomass is not part of our energy source? That's my thinking, that it doesn't make a lot of sense. So I don't know if anybody else has any comments that's from Grace or from the board or commissioners or Colleen or anybody else. I'd love to know if you, your thoughts are around this.
I have a couple of thoughts. I just wanted to echo what John and Dave said. I share those same concerns. And certainly, as an interim step, while we're waiting for whatever this law is going to be to actually pass, and we know what it says, if we can just have an understanding, if that's okay with everybody, to not sign more biomass contracts until we have clarity on what the law says and what our policy as a board is going to be. And I think your point, Chuck, about the dispatchability, the question is whether we're calling it renewable or not. Not, yeah, we understand oil and gas also emit carbon, as does burning wood. But the issue is whether we're going to try to call this renewable when what it is, if it's done on a scale, is that it's it's material that wouldn't be burned and returned to the atmosphere, except for that it's being put into a power plant. And we've read, I read the materials Dave sent around, and where this is allowed and called renewable, we see massive deforestation in the southeastern United States, and we see that material shipped over to other countries. You know, it's one of these things where it's a concern. And I think we're all out looking at the orange skies and wanting to know what we can do, you know, to kind of do our part here. So I just wanted to echo what John and Dave said. If we can hold, if there's a way to hold off until we can form a policy, and maybe we don't do this anymore.
Can I add some?
Go ahead, please.
This particular biomass that we invested in is on landfill. It's generating methane that would normally just go into the atmosphere.
Yeah, that's not what I'm talking about, yeah.
And it's taking, it's taking tree trimming that we do. We spend almost a million dollars on tree trimming, and we have a wood waste problem in the state. And so we're recycling that wood waste that we are generating. That was the concept of that particular one. You know, if the board doesn't want us to look into any more of them, but we were taking what we're contributing, and we were trying to make it better. Because we contribute a lot with our tree trimming in order to ensure that the electrical reliability stays intact. So it was a lowering of emissions from our perspective and calculations. So that was the concept, though, for that particular purchase.
Can I just say one thing here, though? I think the volume of wood and material that's being burned would vastly exceed whatever few truckloads are coming out of these towns. And I wasn't talking about, yes, we want to burn methane from landfills. Yes, that's not bad. But having wood chips from young forests cleared and put into a wood chipper and put into a burning into a power plant, that is problematic for the reason.
So let me make a suggestion. I agree with you, David. I think we need to get some facts. So let's get some facts and make a good decision once we take a look at the facts. Burning methane out of a landfill, great. You know, we can do that all day long. If there's enough that doesn't cut down sort of second, third growth forests that are, you know, being supplied offshore, just like a lot of our coals and offshore, then, you know, that's a different story. So I would suggest that what we need to do is take each one of these possible sources and just maybe have a little, like a little seminar or something on which, how we feel about each one of them, where they come from, what are the elements within each one of them, and how do we take advantage of it? And, you know, some of the, it raises other questions as well in terms of hydropower, right? So are there other sources of hydropower? And, you know, some of the IOUs are trying to build a transmission line through the state of Maine to tap into Quebec, which would have no idea what the cost would be on something like that. But there would be certainly, you know, clean renewable energy that's going to waste right now. So I think we need to take each one of them and try to be clever about how to put a portfolio together with our approval. And there's a timing on this, right, Colleen? Correct me if I'm wrong. We need to do this relatively soon so that you can move ahead with your power supply contracts.
Well, we have open positions that we have left open. And, you know, so far, it's been okay because we resolve purchases in the market. And we all know that market purchases are supposed to make up some of your portfolio, right, for your diversity. You don't want too many in them because you could have price spikes. We want to be able to lock in. We left it open so that we could, we were waiting for the Golden Bill, and now the Roadmap 2050 kind of, you know, tells us what's going to be happening or gives us a look at what's going to happen. That allows, I mean, I can proceed with purchases based on the existing sustainability policy that we have. That's not an issue. We are not out of compliance. And, you know, we're not like the IOUs where we're just buying recs to cover our purchases. We are taking money and we are investing in building these projects. So we will continue to do that, and we continue to sell the recs where appropriate in order to invest into more projects. And so when this law gets enacted, we can either do the law or you can vote to do more, whatever it is that you want. But the existing policy is okay. I think Commissioner Talbot had some of the, he wanted some of the language changed. So I thought by adopting the concept of Roadmap 2050 right now, you can change it again. At least we are purchasing in accordance with the policy that you feel is appropriate for now.
Okay, good. Thank you. We're going to look into this further in the next meeting as we look at the portfolio itself. But thank you. That's, I think, a good comment from everyone. Can we move on to the engineering and operations report? Amit?
Yes, sir. I'm giving you the report for, most of the projects are up to date, but, you know, the financials are for the month of July. So on October, on August 19th, basically, we had the circuit that faulted the underground section. You see the cables that, you know, faulted in the dock banks at Station 4. About 160 customers, they got affected, and we had an outage approximately about 40 minutes. We immediately did the switching and brought everybody back on. Approximately 7,600 customers, they could have felt that bump that, you know, caused because it went all, it was near the station, and the whole bus saw the fault. But we managed it. The cable is replaced and fixed, and now we are back in business. The next slide, please. These are the listed projects that are ongoing. Some of them are, you know, they're moving faster than the others. The ones that, they're slower because of the COVID-19 and the slow operation process during that, you know, three, four months that, you know, was, it was slow. But pretty much we're everywhere. We're making progress. You know, the area upgrades, the step-down conversions, underground facilities upgrades, and, you know, secondaries, primaries, transformer replacements, and all of those in all four towns. So these are the listed projects, and we're expecting that, you know, most of them to be completed by end of the year in December. The next one, please. Excuse me. The next one shows the Marion Street in Wilmington, the line extension. This is just, you know, shows that, you know, how much progress we've made. That's a huge project also, and we are almost 60% complete. So we are going to be completing this project by October. The next one, please. Okay, this is showing you the analog electric vehicle charging stations. There are seven dual chargers that they're going to be installed over there. The contractor started this week the installation, and this one, we expect that they fully be operational by mid-October. Next one, please. Okay, these are other projects that are going on. As you see, our plate is pretty full at the engineers, engineering operations. So we've got the power factor optimization software implementation. Right now, we're testing the outage management system in the IVR. Once that one is successfully tested, and we're getting ready now to go to the next phase, which is power factor optimization, which is going to reduce the losses and it's going to save money on the losses of the system, distribution losses. The solar capacity study is complete, and, you know, pretty soon, we're going to have internal presentation to go over that. The operating procedure for that is in draft format. And then, you know, once we go over that and everybody agrees pretty much with the concept, that's going to be finalized. And, you know, if the board would like to see a presentation, then we're more than happy to provide that. Meter replacement project, we hired the Lemer Heard Consulting, and they are looking into, basically, they're looking into the future. They're doing the gap analysis, where we are and where we need to be 10, 15 years with the technology movement. And based on the business best practices. And based on the business best practices, so they're going to make recommendations, what metering system we need to go. You know, and how much, you know, it's going to cost for the next three years. And that's why we decided to put a pause on this project was slated to at least the first phase to be done in 2020. And we put a pause because we wanted to see that you'll make sure we get the best technology available that it's going to be around for the next 10 to 15 years. And so they are doing the study, they're going to give us presentation by the end of the month. And then we're going to pretty much create a roadmap for moving forward for the next three years to replace all of the meters with the updated upgraded technology that is going to be good hopefully for another 10, 15 years. With the programs that, you know, IRD has and engineering with automation and everything. So it's going to encompass all of those components. Next slide, please. Okay, these are the list of the maintenance programs, basically that every month I go over them, you see that they're all going well. Their infrared scan was completed, there was no hotspot. Primary metering testing, that's a project that was delayed due to COVID-19. The contractors annexed there is coming from out of state. And they did that travel restriction basically paused that. But we just got a word this week that, you know, they're going to be coming in October and that project is going to be done when whatever parts, everything that we need to replace them, we can schedule them and put them on a maintenance plan to upgrade their CTs, PTs and all the parts that they need to be upgraded. So also in a manhole inspection, we are fixing some of the manholes that we inspected and found out problems with the manhole chimney, the walls and the cover and everything. There are about 30, 35 of them that they need attention and that's going to be taken care of as part of the maintenance, ongoing maintenance. Next slide, please. This is showing the age transformer replacement program that is started back in 2015. Approximately, we have 1,800 transformers that are 20 years and older. So these transformers that are scheduled to be replaced based on the physical conditions and also the age, obviously the older transformers, they take priorities. We've got some transformers that is still in the system that they're over 30, 40 years. Not necessarily they're going to fail right away, but you know, the transformer at that age, we'd like to see that upgraded with a more efficient transformers that based on the new guidelines, you know, the new efficient transformers, the efficiency goes up to 98%, 90, 99.8%. Some of the older transformers, the efficiency is under 90%, about 80, 85%. So that's going to say bring some cost savings for us. So this is a well spent money in the right direction in order to upgrade the reliability and lower the losses of the system that the system would benefit and the ratepayers would benefit from.
I mean, that's that's a, that's a really big number. I mean, going from 90 to 97% or whatever in the efficiency of the device. And, you know, I know we're going to get into this in the comparison with the IOUs later, but they're investing a huge amount of money in their infrastructure to reduce the losses in their systems. And we're doing exactly the same thing with transformer replacements.
Well, I got a good news for you because back in 2015, when I came in, the losses of the system were close to 5%. But all the upgrades that we've done, we're down to less than 3.5%.
That's great.
This is because of this transformer replacement program as well as the upgrading the wires, the poles and everything that, you know, has contributed to not only the reliability, but reduction of the losses system wide. So I want to thank the board for supporting us in that direction because it's definitely a step in the right direction. It's saving the ratepayers huge money and the money that's got to go to the losses. Now we are upgrading the system. The plant value goes up and the towns, you know, everybody would benefit from it, you know, because as the assets are being maintained. So the plant value goes up and, you know, everybody would benefit from that. The next, you're welcome. The next slide, this is showing basically the snapshot of the budget spending through month of July. That, you know, by year to date, we spend approximately 4.3 million and budget, the budget is 11.5 million. And we got still 7.3 million to go. So some of these projects, you know, that are on hold, like you said, metering, you know, we're not going to be spending $2 million on that because we wanted to pause and, you know, go for, because the technology is moving so fast that now more and more companies, they're offering, you know, they're, you know, they're really more efficient and, you know, better technologies. And the the meters are becoming more efficient and better and they can support more and more of the demand response and demand side management projects that IRD and, you know, this is on our roadmap to do. So that's why we kind of paused it to see, to make sure we get absolutely the best technology that is going to be carrying us for the next 10 to 15 years, at least with the programs that we have. So and also the substation land is still searching, Colin and I, we've got some good, you know, locations that, you know, we are pursuing, we are going full speed in order to secure the land and hopefully build the substation. And we're very excited about that. These are good projects, good things are coming up. Next slide, please. These are the list of the poles, double poles, and I'm not going to go through everyone. You see that, you know, in Linfield and Wilmington, we've got the highest number of poles. These are the areas that heavily we are, you know, approaching, upgrading the poles and doing the reliability upgrades of the transformer replacements, the poles, the wires and everything that, you know, we're spending in order to beef up the reliability in those areas. The next one, please. And these are the reliability indices. As you could see that, you know, with the number of storms that we've had, we've had more storms this year over the past five years and we still, the reliability is doing much better. I mean, you can see that, you know, the outages that they, you know, even during the bad storms, you know, we quickly restore their outages, you know, much better than what the IOUs they do. And, you know, the crews are there and, you know, we restore the power to the people within a short period of time. So that's it for the causes of the outages. The last one, these are the vehicles that we recently received. This shows the picture of the underground truck that we got this year. That's going to help us to even move those underground construction projects faster, which is, this is exactly what this vehicle is going to do, excuse me. And we also got four SUVs and one pickup truck that we received and they're being registered and they're going to be utilized next week. So again, like what Colin mentioned, this is in line with our strategy to move toward the electric vehicles. Technology unfortunately on the SUVs, you know, for the for the SUVs, it's not really, it's a hybrid. It's getting there, but it wasn't available at the time that, you know, we went out to bid. But the truck, the same, I know with the truck we're getting. Any, any, any vehicle that in the future they're coming full electric, that's basically our policy. And we purchasing those, replacing them. We also, the engineers, these SUVs, they're going to go to engineers. They're going to replace, it's going to replace their truck F-150s. So it's more efficient and, you know, it's saving energy for that matter. That basically concludes my meeting. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Any questions, anyone? If not, I believe we got a procurement request.
Yes, sir.
Ready for the motion, Mr. Chair?
Please.
A move that bid IFB 2020-11 for removal, transportation, disposal and remediation of hazardous materials including emergency response services be awarded to ACV Environmental Services Inc. For a not to exceed amount of $50,000 per year parent without written approval, closed parent pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 30, Section 39m as the lowest responsible and eligible bidder on the recommendation of the general manager.
Okay. Any discussion on this, please?
Is there a volume of waste that gets removed for that price?
Yeah, well, there's what we did, it's we really don't know and that's a very good question. What we did, we gave them two sample jobs. The sample A, sample B, the PCB versus non-PCB. And all the bidders, the bid went to 22 bidders, basically five, they responded. And the lowest responsible responsive bidder was the ACV that, you know, it's the not to exceed $50,000 a year. And these are basically for the soil. There are other components of the, you know, oil spill that, you know, we have budgeted also, but it's not coming under this line item.
Good to hear there's five bids, that's the main thing.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. The five bid and the lowest was this company, which was red. So basically this is a hazard waste and soil disposal for PCB, non-PCB and other hazardous materials, like the transformers coming out of the field that we need to dispose them. They should go to a special facilities, you know, the non-PCB, we don't have any non-PCBs, any PCBs, I'm sorry. You know, mostly the transformers are the ones that we have, they're all the non-PCBs. But if there are anything left in the field that we are not aware of, if you're there after testing, they're going to go to the special facilities. And this is where it's going to be taken care of for the part of that. It's a three-year contract, so every year is $50,000. And I think we get a good price for this. We're very happy that, you know. They gave, that came out cheaper than the last time that you went out. The last time we've got the total of for the, from the NRC East. We got the cost, the cost comparison was $18,300 for the same samples. The typical job A and typical job B, but this year ABC gave us for typical job A and typical job $14,482. So it was less.
We made a Thank you, Hamid.
There are no more questions. Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Pacino, aye?
Mr. Stenbeck, aye?
The Hennessy, aye?
Bob would aye.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Voted on mute.
Excellent.
Four and a half votes.
Item number 12, which is just general discussion for the next RMLD board meeting. We've suggested October 22nd, Thursday. And the cab will be reviewing, meeting to review the budget on October 15th, which is, we usually have the cab meeting coincident with our RMLD meeting, but I think the budget probably takes a separate meeting.
That sounds good.
Okay, so the cab meeting, October, I'll be at that meeting. Does anyone have any conflict with October 22nd?
I probably will not be at that meeting. I'm having cataract surgery that morning, so. Yeah, so I doubt, I'm doubtful for that meeting.
Okay, well, thank you, Phil. We could, we could have your screen just blacked out, I mean. Okay, well, good luck with the cataract surgery. Okay, good. So I think if there's no other questions, I'd like to move on to Grace's presentation for us.
Great, thank you very much and thank you, Mr. Chairman, for inviting us. Thank you to the board for welcoming us. My name is John Rogers. I live at 39 Tower Hill Road in North Reading, but I am here as a representative of Grace, the Greater Reading Alliance for Clean Energy. And I've got to say, the the previous discussion earlier in the agenda has queued up nicely, a lot of this stuff. So I think I can just skip right through. Tracy, would you mind? Are you in a position to pull those, pull those up? I won't belabor anything. So, yeah, I'll, I'll start here. Cost is really important. We hear that every time we come to these meetings, we we get that, we understand that. We also know that you and we value more than cost. I hear that in in what you all talk about, the staff and and the board. And I expect you've found that that your, our customers do too. You're thinking about environmental impact, you're thinking about equity and fairness, you're thinking about the future and in terms of more than money and we see that. The sustainable energy policy, even when it's not required of you. And and we get the reasons. I mean, I heard this in Chuck's presentation, talking about June being much warmer than expected, talking about the winter, upcoming winter likely to be warmer than usual. Hamid talking about more storms than average, the mention of the orange skies, we get we get the importance of thinking about more than money and we get the, I think we all get the importance of the power sector in this work. And we certainly see it reflected in RMLD's communications. So this being the cover of last year's annual report and you see solar panels there and a couple of the, couple of the drawings that got selected. And and I will say, I, I I will echo Gail's thanks and appreciation for all the many things. I mean, she mentioned the heat pump initiative and Chuck, it's very, it's really neat to hear about that. Lots of different components that RMLD has been working on. So I want to focus on the clean energy piece. Next slide, please, Tracy. And that was, you know, the think more than cost, thinking about costs. That was certainly our thinking when Grace offered proposal in the last in the last meeting and before the last meeting for updating RMLD's renewable and clean energy policies. And appreciate John, John Stenbeck's response was asking for for more details. I will say, I get that we are not an IOU and the very fact that I'm using the pronoun we is a sign that RMLD different, is different. I'm pretty sure if I were in grid or ever sources territory, I wouldn't be thinking of utility as a we. But there are still pieces that have been developed in the state for serving our neighbors, serving neighbors neighboring towns and cities that I, that we, and I, I also appreciate Chuck's talking about the roadmap.
You're breaking up a little bit.
My internet connection is unstable, so forgive me if I.
I'm wondering, John, John, I'm going to
Try again.
I'm wondering if you should call in for the audio because there's serious problems hearing you. And what you're saying is important.
We heard you all the way through about the last minute and a half.
Well, my kids aren't home, so I know it's not that they're using, let me try, can you hear me now? Can you hear that?
Yeah.
All right. Okay, let's maybe we'll press forward. I'm not sure how the call-in would work, but so so what Grace, Grace was suggesting, what our request was, was that the, that the RMLD, that RMLD adopt consider adopting a policy of parity with the investor-owned utilities. And what we mean by that, in answer to John's question, is thinking about the same technology, considering about the same standards for complying. And again, a lot of the previous discussion, the discussion earlier in this meeting has queued up some of these things. Next slide, please. So just a, just a little, a little bit of history, just take a step back. Massachusetts IOUs have been meeting the renewable portfolio standard for decades. So this KMA structuring act in 2008, we saw the first major update to the RPS. In 2018, we saw another one that that further strengthened, accelerated the pace. And 2020, as Chuck has said, there are, there are certainly pieces pending. The point here is that Massachusetts continued to see the RPS as a tool worth using and strengthening. Next slide, please. So the technology considerations, and again, you all have already talked about that in this meeting. You see the RPS, the sort of suite of of technologies you'd expect, solar, wind, hydro, wave and tidal when those come along, geothermal, also landfill gas and select biomass, so biomass under certain conditions. If we're talking about the clean energy standard, then that brings in issues of large hydro, nuclear, potentially other low emitting resources and you, John, Dave, Dave, you were quite right. There are sources on here that are easier to to swallow or easier to embrace and ones that are harder. So, but this is sort of the suite that that you could consider. And a lot of the details, some of the details have been worked out in ways that I think are useful. Otherwise, I think you could, you could decide to categorically exclude, but but the the point is there are these lists out there of what qualify, next please. I I will say there are also vintage, vintage requirements for each of those, so they have to have been built after a certain date or substantially remodeled after a certain date. Terms of the annual targets, what we mean when we're talking about imitating the or adopting what the IOUs are up to, you can see the the RPS. RPS is at 16% this year and increasing 2% per year over the next decade. The CES is at 20% of retail load this year and increasing 2% per year. And as Chuck has pointed out, the roadmap would require even stronger, even a faster, faster pace than than what's listed here for the CES. And as Chuck has pointed out, the roadmap would require even stronger, even a, a faster, faster pace than, than what's listed here for the C E S. Next slide, please. And then in terms of the standards for, for complying, uh, you know, it's pretty simple to generate, in terms of the generation, IOUs for the most part don't own. Any generation that was part of the restructuring. So they are out there buying renewable energy credits and retiring them, one per megawatt hour. That is how they comply. Uh, and, and Chuck alluded to this when he talked about retiring certificates as being required under something like. The roadmap, uh, or the golden, golden bill, and it would be similar for the, for the clean energy standard. Next slide, please. And I want to focus, and I will not read all the texts on the, on the, uh, the slides that follow. I, I did want you to have them as a resource because I know this has been an issue for as long as I've been talking with R M L D. And this goes back to the, a time before, uh, most of you, uh, were on the board. But REX renewable energy credits or renewable energy certificates are the tool. For establishing or validating renewable energy claims. And that's not me saying that, that's, that's the, the states that, that launched the renewable portfolio standards. That's the EPA, that's the F T C, that's the C E Q and many others. Next slide, please. So just skipping, uh, through some of those resources. So this is Massachusetts, which launched the first statewide R P S with that nineteen ninety-seven law. And it's talking about REX, you know, a, um, a renewable energy generator generates two things. One is the electricity and the other, yeah, it's the positive environmental attributes associated with the energy production. So two different products, only one of which is a rec, only one of which conveys the positive environmental attributes. Next slide, please. And Iowa, which was actually the state that had the first, it was not statewide, which is why Massachusetts has the claim to that. But Iowa was, you know, figured out that you needed this agreed upon abstract medium of exchange. Because you can't tell an electron from an electron. And that is where it's due. Next slide, please. And again, I wanted you all to have these as resources. So the EPA says that a rec represents the property rights. To the non-power attributes of, of renewable energy generation. So whoever holds the rec, retires that rec is the one who has that attributes, EPA, and the others are quite clear on this. Next slide, please. And, uh, also from the EPA, they're talking about making a, making a claim, if you make a claim to have renewable energy, that constitutes a retirement of the rec. So any sale or claim by a different owner would constitute a double claim. Again, this is, uh, this is how Rex, how this, how we as a society have concluded that we can track. How we track renewable energy because we can't tell an electron from electron. Next slide, please. And the Federal Trade Commission has a lot of directives, uh, about how, what kind of claims you can make if you've got them or if you don't have them. If you had them and then you sold them, um, and, uh, they're, they're quite particular. So if you buy a product that says, you know, this, um, uh, this bread was made with a hundred percent wind power, they've got to have the Rex. And have retired those Rex or had them retired on their behalf for them to be able to make claims about having used wind power. Slide, please. And here, the, this was, uh, from the U S, the Federal Council on Environmental Quality, just talking about. Uh, basically giving directive to all the, all the federal agencies who are, who are big purchasers of Rex for the same reason that. Large companies like a Google, like a Facebook, like a Walmart, why they buy a renewal. Um, a rec is retired once the claim is made, you can't count the electricity obtained from a renewable energy project. If you don't have the Rex, so that's all, should be quite clear. Next slide, please. And just to make it really clear, Rex are how you prove that you have renewable energy. So if you had them and you sold them or gave them away, no Rex equals no renewable energy. And to be clear, this is not about tying our hands, a company and organization, institution has a right to sell its Rex. The point is that if it does so, it forfeits the claim to have or have offered renewable energy. You need to have them and hold them to make any claims. It can't be clearer. It, then, then, then that. Next slide, please. In case it needs to be clear, these are a couple of short videos, which are really great, that, uh, that go into, you know, in a video format. Uh, to, uh, before you go to bed, you know, check these out, um, because these will, uh, these, these lay it out more clearly than I'm able to. Next slide, please. So I just want to end, I, I say, uh, you know, so adopting, if you think about the, the standards for complying, there is this other part of client. It's not clear how that would work in a case of R M L D. I mean, we, we set our, we would set our own goals. We don't meet the goals, do we then put money into a fund that we then use to buy, I don't know. But I just want to, uh, just to be transparent about how IOUs do it. They do have this out and that serves as a cap on the price. So if the price of a rec is more than seventy dollars, they can, they can essentially buy absolution instead. And that money does get invested by the state in driving renewable energy forward. Next slide, please. So I'll just reiterate that this is what we were looking for is, uh, R M L D to commit to, and it is voluntary until something like, uh. Like the, the roadmap bill or the golden bill comes along, um, but to meeting targets that are as, uh. Bold, as necessary as what, what the IOUs are doing. Uh, using something from that same suite of technologies, and I fully support the exploration that John was proposing, just talk about what we like and what we don't. Um, those level of targets or higher and the same reporting standards. And again, um, the big issue here, I think, is Rex. You have the Rex, Chuck has said you've got the Rex. Um, it wouldn't involve retiring them all, uh, in the near term, because that, that requirement is going to be ramping up. You could sell everything but what you would need to meet the standards that you would, you would lay out. But, but the point is that if you want to be, if we want to be making claims about having renewable energy. The only way we can do that is if we hold on to the Rex, or we can do it only for the portion that we hold on to the Rex for. And I just, I, I, I don't know how to state that anymore clearly. Next slide, please. So, thank you, uh, and thank you on behalf of my colleagues, uh, from, from Grace. Um, again, we're very, we very much appreciate everything that the, that the board and the staff and Colleen have made. Made happen around electrification, around efficiency. Um, this is the third, the third leg of the stool, which is getting our, our clean energy policy aligning that with the, with the broader interests of. Uh, the community and the rate pairs and us as, as citizens of, of the community and of the world. So thank you.
Great, thank you very much, John. Uh, we certainly appreciate the input. I think you can see that we're, we're certainly trying to, um. Uh, get to clean energy. I think, uh, you're speaking for myself, uh, uh. As a member of the board, we certainly believe in, I believe in climate change. As a matter of fact, I think you'd have to be a Luddite not to believe in climate change. That's my personal opinion, uh, so I'm not tagging anybody with that. Uh, I want to thank Grace, uh, one for the presentation, because, you know, we, we do agree with you, may differ, differ about the paths of how we get to there. And the other thing I want to thank you for is for sort of opening my eyes on the IOUs, because quite frankly, I really hadn't paid much attention to them. Although we do have a fifth columnist on our board, uh, Bob Coulter, who works for National Grid. And he, he, he certainly, there we go, he knows all about it. Uh, but, but I wanted to share with you just a couple of different perspectives that we look at, or I look at, um. The IOUs, as we very, very short, uh, if we could, uh, bring up slide number six, Tracy. What I did, um, Grace, was, uh, take a look at the annual reports and the publicly available data. From, um, the IOUs. And I know you're focused on Massachusetts IOUs because that's where you are, that's where we are. But it's really important to see what they're doing outside of Massachusetts. And it's really crucial to understand what their strategy is, how they're thinking, et cetera. Uh, because I think what I'd like to do is somehow, you, you would like us to copy them, well, I would turn that around and say, how can we leverage them? In terms of what they're investing in to our purposes. So first, you know, R M L D is about a ninety million dollar organization. The totality of National Grid and EverSource are thirteen billion and EverSource is eight point five. If you bring it down just to the electrical revenue, it's still six point five billion and six point two billion, the second line. So they're, they're, and from a revenue perspective, about seventy times larger than us. As you can see, the number of employees, very significant, number of customers, they're in the millions, we have thirty, seven, seventy thousand residents. Their return on, uh, equity, uh, is eleven point five percent. We've got to find a way to match that to our eight percent R O A, uh, which we're regulated on. We're a not-for-profit, they're public, they have access to publicly available funds. Uh, National Grid, as a matter of fact, in the annual report says they can, at any point in time, access three billion dollars of working capital. Whenever they need it. Um, we can't do that. Uh, in terms of generation, we've got solar farm battery, you know, we have. National Grid outside of Massachusetts does indeed have generation capability. They've got fifty-seven fossil units on Long Island. EverSource has seventy megawatts of solar in Massachusetts, and they're, both of them are investing in very heavily in wind and solar. You can see from the energy generated, they're about a hundred times larger than us. But when you get down to the bottom line, you're, you're prove, your point is well taken, that they're at the, uh, the, uh, R P S. Um, in terms of being regulated to meet that, I submit that, having worked for major corporations and consulted to many of them. If you just ask them to do that, they wouldn't do it, right? They have to be regulated, they have to be forced into, uh, meeting these regulations. So they're not a bunch of good guys, they're a bunch of basically financial institutions who are trying to get maximum return. If, uh, you could go to, uh, slide number seven. Next slide. I looked at the projects, again, this is outside of Massachusetts for National Grid. And you see that from Rhode Island through Vineyard, they're investing in wind, right? Some hydro, and there's the megawatts that they're investing in. I mean, that tells me that they're really investing in generation. So while in Massachusetts, they may not have generation. Outside of Massachusetts, they're dumping hundreds of millions of dollars into wind power, into hydro. Uh, they, uh, they bought, uh, the fifty percent ownership of Sunrun, which is a residential solar, two hundred and sixteen megawatts you see there. Uh, so the point is, is that they are investing in, uh, green or renewable power. And they're doing it on a massive scale, again, because they have to meet the R P S. To your point, if you go, if you, you just go into the next slide, EverSource. Same type of thing, right? EverSource, uh, is, uh, doing it, they're, they're almost a mirror image of each other. In terms of investing in these wind and solar, uh, they tried to do Northern Pass, right, which is dead. But they dumped in three hundred and eighteen million dollars before it died. Uh, the National Grid is invested, investing in, uh, going through Maine, of course. To get to the Quebec Hydro Power, and that is still alive and, and may actually work. Um, if we go to the green projects that, um, number, side number nine, there we go, R M L D. It was interesting because I, I, again, I really appreciate the fact that you brought this up, because when I started comparing the IOUs to what we're doing at R M L D. There are many, many similarities. I mean, we've got community solar, and again, I didn't do the ratio of a hundred to one in terms of what they're doing. But we're doing, investing in grid efficiency, that's why I belabored the point about, with Amid, about increasing the percentage of energy that gets to. The final end-use customer, which both of the IOUs talk about in their annual reports and in all their public statements. So the best thing they can do is reduce the losses on their system, so they don't need to get as much power. Uh, we have rebate programs, a car charger programs, the LED streetlights we did years ago. Uh, we've, we've been focused on industrial and commercial programs, to the extent of we've actually decreased the amount of power we sell. You know, go to, go to our commercial and our industrial customers, we help them reduce their power load, not just with LEDs, but with adjustable frequency drive. Uh, devices which use a fraction of the, of the energy that the former DC, uh, devices used to use. So we've been doing this all along and feeding it into our portfolio. So I hope you appreciate that. We are mimicking the IOUs in many, many different regards. If you could, um, jump to, um. Number, let's go to number five, this is the last slide. What we're trying to do is, with the benefit of Grace and others. Is to do some possible brainstorming approaches to move faster to green power, right? We all want to do it, there's no question about that. The question is, how do we do it, uh, that doesn't impact all of our customers, uh, in a negative way? And when I say customers, I mean, increase in their rates dramatically. I mean, we can't just, we could, you know, increase them by twenty percent tomorrow. But I'm pretty sure they're, that we wouldn't be on the board much longer. But, so that's not what we want to do. We need a gradual, a compromise situation to say, how do we accomplish this? And we're kicking around different ideas like this buddy program that lets individuals or businesses pay additional for someone else who can't pay. Uh, maybe we can use rate stabilization funds to help the transition, uh, in the transition. We need to test that. Uh, continue to sell, uh, Rex to buy more green power. You've just mentioned that that's a no-no, we, we shouldn't be able to do that. But I would submit that, you know, I'll show you one last slide, I lied about that, about what EverSource is doing. But we're trying to find clever ways to basically piggyback on the IOUs efforts. In all these wind power, solar power, other, you know, hydropower generation mechanisms that we can somehow purchase into. To bring it into our fold as well. So I want to thank you again for, for sort of opening our eyes to this in terms of how we compare. And the thing we have to be careful about is, when you got a huge entity and you got a small entity like ourselves. They have economies of scale and economies of scope. And what I mean by that, not just from the scale perspectives in terms of, you know, to buy things, because they're bigger, uh, you know, they can buy it less expensively. But when you also provide gas pipelines, which both of them do, and some of them are moving into water. You get economy, economies of scope, it's called, meaning you do more things, which then you pass through your regulatory, your S G N A, your sales general administrative. Areas, and so the cost per doing it actually drops. And that's how they can create profitability for all of their, um, uh, all of their shareholders. So it's a different perspective in terms of how we're managed and how they are managed. We just have to be, really, I think, on top of that. One last slide, I said line here. I, I don't understand, quite understand this. Slide number ten. This is from EverSource's two nine, two thousand nineteen annual report. So they kind of lay out each one of the states in terms of what it needs to ultimately get to. And by the way, I should comment that all these wind power operations, which are offshore, uh, are clearly not going to be done in time. They're projected to two thousand, uh, twenty-three through two thousand twenty-five. Covid and other things are limiting them in terms of being able to accomplish that, so they're going to be extended out. So I really question whether the IOUs can actually meet some of the, uh, clean energy standards that are there. I'm not sure exactly what they're going to do, but I'm sure that they're going to ask for extensions. If you look at the very bottom of what they're doing in Massachusetts, very low bottom comment, with their solar operation, they've got seventy megawatts of solar. The Rex generated from the N star electric solar power facilities are sold to other energy suppliers and proceeds. From these sales are credited back to customers. So they are selling their Rex, they're not just holding on to them. I, I'm just trying to show you that, you know, they're, they're doing some things that we're doing as well. And maybe it's not the right thing for tomorrow, but for today, it's just a, a compromise situation to move into the future. Any comments?
Yeah, thank you. And, and you're, you're absolutely right, these are large companies, they're spread over a bunch of states. I think a lot of the figures you showed, you have to separate out the regulated utilities. That is, you know, the regulated distribution companies in Massachusetts, uh, you'd come to a different conclusion if you looked at that universe. Um, but including for things like this. So if you see them selling the Rex. They are not claiming the Rex for their, their compliance with the state R P S. They wouldn't be able to, it would be illegal. Um, so they are, they are, they have regulated entities, they have unregulated, they're doing things. And in fact, if, if you look at those wind deals, those came about, uh, the, the offshore wind deals. The four hundred megawatts, the seven hundred and four megawatt projects that you, you showed there, and that's, that's great research. Uh, those came about because of the two thousand sixteen Energy Diversity Act and the two thousand eighteen update, the Clean Energy Act. Um, so we have a requirement, uh, for sixteen, that utilities, the, the IOUs in the state have to procure sixteen hundred megawatts, now thirty-two hundred megawatts. Between now and, and twenty thirty, twenty thirty-five, that may be updated as a result of the, the legislation that Chuck was talking about. They are actually entering into those contracts, uh, as the distribution companies, they are forced to sell. I think if I remember correctly, they have to sell the power and the Rex and then either credit or debit their customers based on that. So those go back into the market, then they are used for compliance, maybe by the same companies, but that's a. companies. But that's a, uh, in, uh, that's, they are, you can bet that any rec is counted only once, used only once, retired only once for, uh, compliance with, uh, with the RPS or used in the voluntary market. Again, all those government institutions, churches, households like mine who voluntarily pay, um, that counts, that gets counted only once. So anytime you see a sale like that, you can bet that it's no longer on, on their ledger in terms of being renewable energy. But it's wherever the buck stops, that's where, those are the ones. And, and that's what we're trying to. So if you do nothing, if you take nothing else away from this, from this, from this presentation, um, just know that rec retirement equals renewable energy. Rec sale says, I don't have renewable energy anymore. It's as clear as that. And you can do that. You can absolutely do that. I think customers are going to want.
They did so. I mean, it's.
But I don't.
Published it. I mean, they published it, John.
But they're not using it for compliance. They, they can't use it for compliance with the RPS. If they sold it, it's because somebody else is going to use it for compliance or it's in the voluntary market. So that's what's different. I see, we see RMLD selling the RECs and saying, we've got solar, we've got wind. We don't. We don't anymore for whatever. Maybe we're not selling all our RECs and that's how we're able to do that. But if we're selling all our RECs, we don't have them anymore. And those, that is force of law. That is, that is property. That is measurement. That is how people can make those claims. So I would urge the board and staff.
Let me suggest that, because we have to go into executive session now. Um, uh, what I would like to suggest is that, uh, I'd like you, Grace, to think about clever ways of helping us out, uh, of this transition zone. And because I do believe in sort of group think, uh, the more people you have, sort of thinking about it and dealing with facts, and facts beyond Massachusetts, by the way, how we can somehow tap into that if there's a mechanism for doing that, that might help the RMLD become more energy efficient.
I have one, uh, just off the top of my head that there's power in numbers. And I think one of the best things, you kind of have it with ENE and the other group, but I mean, getting all the MLPs together to work together. And I, what that means is to be defined, but that would give you a lot more power and strength, um, financial resources and so forth to do various things that might be creative solutions to this problem. Can I add to that, John?
Yes, please. Go ahead, Colleen.
It is the power of us working together with MLPs of why the majority of these, um, uh, green projects have, are being built. Um, that's what we're doing. We're working collaboratively with the other MLPs, um, to be able to come up with the capital in order to invest to build these things. So we're doing that on a daily basis.
That's awesome, Colleen.
Okay. I would love to continue this discussion, but we do have to get Philip to bed or someone here. Well, Dave, to help it to bed. So, um, I want to thank Grace once again. And uh, let's see, I'd like to, uh, could we have a?
Thank you all.
Motion?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Grace.
Ready for the motion, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
All of you.
Moved that the board go into executive session to consider the purchase of real property returned to regular session for the sole purpose of adjournment.
Let's have a second.
Second.
Uh, Mr. Stempak, aye?
Mr. Pacino, aye.
I say aye.
Uh, thanks for the presentation, Mr. Talbott, aye.
Mr. Calder, aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone.